Still in the latch.
Come on, Tom, you can do this.
Make a motion, we have that fixed.
Sorry, the meeting's not open yet. I'd like to open this meeting, September sixteenth, at seven oh one PM. Please join me for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I don't see any announcements in my packet. Are there any announcements that I might have?
Nope, no announcements.
Okay.
That's my favorite kind.
Meeting minutes, we have two sets of meeting minutes to approve, August fifth and August nineteenth. I think we'll have to take them individually because different members were here for each of those. So we can look for August fifth if anybody would like to make a motion or discussion.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as written for Monday, August fifth, two thousand nineteen.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Is that a word? Abstention?
Saying.
So that would be two?
Two abstentions.
Three. All right, looking for August nineteenth.
I have one correction, which is on page three, under emergency management. It says on a motion made by Paul Hullett. If we can get that.
Page three.
Yep.
Page three, a little more than halfway down.
Yeah, I see that.
Emergency management, yep.
All right.
I had it too.
So, oh, Paul was appointed. So I think Jen made that, I wasn't here. No? No. I guess we'll have to look back to see. So it was probably Andrew or me.
Was it you?
So it was probably me.
No, you seconded.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
No, Kevin Surratt seconded it.
She'll have to go back and look.
It might have been one of them.
She can watch, yeah.
Do you remember?
I don't.
She can go back and check. All right, any other updates?
I make a motion to accept these minutes with that revision, although Kevin, were these the ones that had Eric instead of Kevin?
Correct. In the present, yeah.
Okay. With also with the corrections to Mr. Surratt's.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Did we get a second on that?
Second.
Okay.
Good catch.
Aye.
So what is it, Tom, Andrew, and any abstentions?
One. Yes, aye.
Okay. That's it for minutes. Got some correspondence here. Do you have any correspondence? I don't have any.
Nope.
No correspondence.
Means our town administrator is taking care of all.
Absolutely. And look at him, he's going for the next item already.
Right.
So for departments, the police department tonight?
Yes, chief's right out there, he's coming in.
Okay. Needing an appointment tonight? You'd like to put your hat on, we can wait a moment.
I don't know.
All right, we just got to you for appointment of Robert Johnson V as full-time police officer.
Thank you so much. We have a vacancy due to the Department of Osters Saint Pierre. He's moving on to a larger department that frankly pays a little bit more than we pay. So I wish him the best. He served well while he was here. So now with the vacancy, Bob Johnson's here, a young individual. I believe he has the qualities and the drive to become a very good police officer. His father's a current state trooper.
Okay.
So Mr. Johnson and his wife Barbara's here as well. So I think he's a good asset for the town. I think he's gonna do well. I don't think he's gonna be here for twenty years, but I think he's gonna be here for...
You never know, Chief.
You never know. But he could step in my shoes someday. Hopefully he is here for a period of time. I do have a commitment for him for at least three years, so that's fine with me. So for three years.
That's two.
Yeah, for three years he'll do fine, and hopefully that does work out. So here's Bob Johnson.
Right.
Bob, you live locally?
I live in Northbridge currently.
Good.
Excellent.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Johnson? Do you have any questions for us?
I'd just like to say thank you on...
We haven't appointed you yet.
Remember their faces.
We'll let you know when he drives.
I appreciate that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'd say thank you for sitting down and allowing me to even go through the interview process for this town. It's a very hard climate to look for work, and Chief Landry was very open and honest and forward with everything, and it seems like a very great town to work in, especially being a new police officer. So I look forward to it.
Well, we welcome you once we appoint you, and, you know, welcome to the town, and hopefully you have some positive experiences with our residents beyond just the ones you get called out to. I work in Northbridge, so we might cross paths, and so I hope you do well and enjoy the community, and we see you around for a long time.
Nice community events that the chief usually attends and such.
Yes.
The good stuff.
Yeah.
I was really pleased to hear that of your interest, Bob, and I'm glad this worked out. So I look forward to working with you. And does anybody else have anything? Because if not, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Robert Johnson V as our full-time police officer for the town of Millville.
Do we need to give an effective date?
It's usually through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty.
From today till June thirtieth?
Okay.
From today till June thirtieth.
Looking for a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? It's written in, welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Bob.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Chief, anything else for me? Yeah, well, I'll have you on there for electronic sign grant. Yes. And update just on the reserve fund transfer that we got approved, just to let folks know what you're doing. And if you have anything else, yeah.
We can make it all that.
Okay. We have a meeting on the park as well. Hey, congrats, you're late.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, folks, for coming.
Yes, thank you, Mom and Dad.
Thank you.
Everything he says, you'll learn a lot.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
Have a good evening here.
Okay, Chief, would you like to tell us about your electronic sign grant?
I do currently. We do have five grants in the hopper. We've been successful with the latest one for a electronic message board. So we're gonna purchase that, we received ten thousand dollars from Mima. A very competitive grant, they actually called and thanked us for the grant. It was very well-written, so they were impressed, and they loaned it to only certain towns. So we're one of the recipients. So ten thousand dollars later, we're gonna install the board similarly to on the same place of the one that currently sits on the side of the...
Same style, same...
It is. It's gonna fit on the towns that are currently there.
I know it's not.
We're gonna take the old one, and we're gonna go in the new one. So that's gonna be... The great thing, it's wireless, so from within the building, we can change the messages on the board.
So it's the message board outside your department?
Yes.
So we'll be electrical?
Yes, right on the individual block that is...
We're coming into twenty nineteen?
I know, so now, yes, we are. So now, Trish, whoever wants to do it can sit with the keyboard from within the station.
Probably do multiple messages.
Exactly. Change it daily, too.
Graphics.
The other board's great, don't get me wrong, it's just inconvenient, just gotta go out there, and I gotta make sure all the spelling's always right.
Kids aren't switching stuff around.
Block out there, so that's, that was a good win for us, so I expect that within a month or two to be installed.
So it's a permanent structure then?
It's permanent. No, it's different than what you see in most businesses, they have those large electronic boards. So that's, it's a great tool to notify the community of different events, different ones. So, like I said, we can change it on the fly.
Same with re-boat access, you can do.
Re-boat access, so if we have a missing child or something like that, we can do it right on the spot. So it's something we every town should have, just a week or two times, but we got one.
When should that be installed, do you think?
Right now, I'm doing the research to purchase the right one.
Yep.
So I'm hoping to order the sign, hoping to order it by the end of the month, month or two.
Thank you to you and Trish.
As long as we have one, yeah.
Nice work, and thank you for those.
We have four other grants we're currently working on right now, which are big grants, you know, unfortunately sometimes it's a match, sometimes it's not. We use a lot of in-kind services to meet the match, so it doesn't cost us anything. That's what we want.
Is this, this one's not a matching grant at all?
No, it's a hundred percent reimbursable, so it's a flat ten thousand dollars.
And will this add any significant costs to the electrical?
I would think so, if you talk about...
Is there LED lights?
Yeah, they're probably LEDs.
Christmas tree, so I think I did actually...
A new Christmas tree.
Actually, it was like seventy-five dollars per year, the cost of using the message board, that's what it was. And it does have a ten-year life expectancy, because nothing lasts forever, so ten years.
Thanks, thank you. You had another item on here, right?
We had the reserve fund transfer, so...
We'll keep all yours together, so you can get through.
Yeah, so the chief can talk about that, but we met at the, with the finance committee last week, just to keep the ball rolling, they had an emergency meeting for us to come in, and the chief had done a lot of homework on the various things, and he can talk about that. But we circumvented the need for the board's selectmen approval in advance of the reserve fund transfer approval by the finance committee, so that he could go forward and get the ball rolling on things. And thanks to Pete, as well as the finance committee. To be realistic, you know, we're not going anywhere anytime soon. I'll make no mistakes about it, the police department's in not very, not in very good conditions, in poor condition, but we have to make the repairs, because we have to stay within the four walls of that building. In either heating and air conditioning system, we did our due diligence, we found some great prices, and at the last minute, we found one more greater price, and we saved another five thousand dollars, bringing it down to like thirty thousand. So we contacted the company on Friday, gave them the news that they did receive the bid. So within two weeks, they should be within the building, starting the repairs. And that will take care of the air quality issue, heating and air conditioning issue for, you know, many, many years to come, but there are other repairs the building needs. So over time, we're just gonna have to make those repairs, not as, not as much as the heating system, but there will be some needed repairs along the way, if we're gonna stay there. I don't see us leaving anytime soon.
I wish this was done a little bit earlier for her, I know she had a tough summer this summer.
It was a very tough summer, and to be frank, I spoke to Peter on numerous occasions, and he says, "Oh."
Yeah.
When the climate was ninety degrees in that building, no one should be working. So I would send her home. She did, she was very good, though. She would come in early during the day, around seven, so I would send her home around two.
Right.
Because it was that warm. So hopefully that's behind us, so we can move forward. I went over for about fifteen minutes, and I couldn't last any longer one day.
Right, right.
And Chief was glad to see you good.
No, I felt, I knew she was working in tough conditions this summer, so we apologize.
Well, in her office, we have multiple computers, a server, generating heat, so the thermostat on the other side of the room is probably five degrees off.
Right.
So it's probably ninety-three where she was, so...
Yeah, and after speaking to our capital, capital planning member, who actually has walked through.
Exactly.
He's, I had a conversation with him, and he was very happy to hear this was being done.
I certainly appreciate the repair being approved, the board wanting to be approved, it's something we drastically need, but the precursor is, or preemptive notification, we're gonna need more repairs down the road. An example would be when it was so warm inside the building, I had to open the exterior door that's in my office. Once I opened it, I couldn't close it. The entire frame was so rotted, we had to have an emergency repair to repair the door.
I did hear that Peter and Sherry know how to repair doors, just go with screwdriver?
Just the latches, okay, just the latches. I actually had photos of them having a look today. There were thousands of carpenter ants sitting there, rot everywhere, so that was fixed.
I figure that's probably like when they remodeled.
Yeah.
So it's what, ninety-two?
Exactly. The building's seventy years old, it has multiple issues, but we're gonna fix them as we go, and that's all we can do.
Yep.
Great. So, I noticed that the removal of the, of the oil tank is not included in this. Is it gonna stay there, or is there a plan to...
Well, the good thing about that, that's the exterior above-ground oil tank, which is the one you have in your basement.
Yes.
My plan is just to drain it, and it can stay there in perpetuity, or you can take it out.
Okay, so there's...
There's no environmental risk once we empty the tank.
Yes.
So it's just a regular two-hundred-and-fifty gallon...
Two-seventy-five.
Yeah, two-seventy-five tank.
All right.
Okay.
So if you want it removed, we can certainly find the funds.
That guy from Unsocket with the old come-along on his truck, would he come and get that?
I could call him, but he may not be ethical, so I can't.
Well, if you remove it, you might open yourself...
Open another can of worms.
From what I understand, you have to cut it in half and clean it right there on the site.
If it's not causing any harm.
It's not causing any harm, it's gonna be drained, so it can be capped, and that's it. Beautiful.
And one last question. You, the amount for, for replacing the HVAC system was about, was thirty thousand some, right?
That's the entire system, thirty thousand.
And...
Four hundred. Thirty thousand, four hundred.
Yeah, and you followed proper bidding procedures for that?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
And it's all new vents and so forth, which sells that big row. Above-ceiling vents, and we're gonna cap the vents in the floor.
Oh, good.
Everyone that did an evaluation really couldn't believe we had that system in that building. It's just poor air quality. So that was a common theme, that what are we doing here? So the new system's in the, in the attic.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be all the vents.
Very good.
Well, I figured while he was here, talk about the park, did he sense there's anything to update on that, Chief? It was closed after the board voted that. The annual mya grant was released about a month ago, so it doesn't fit in the criteria, but I did call them, I did reach out to them and say, "Listen, I understand it doesn't fit, but can we make it fit?" And I got a call, I think it was Thursday, the answer was no.
Okay.
It really exceeds their scope of that grant, so we couldn't do it. So at the end of the day, it needs probably five to six thousand dollars of work. It needs wood chips. Like I mentioned earlier, they're, they're rotted, washed away.
Low-grade, significantly.
There has to be a certain height.
Playground apparatus that needs to be repaired. So I took photos and measurements and sent that to the original company, Playtime, and they're gonna put quotes together for us to repair or replace certain pieces.
Yeah.
They're not gonna be cheap. The slide just cost us seven hundred dollars for a plastic slide.
Right, right.
The material or the equipment that we need replaced now are the steel steps. They're all coated with a heavy rubber. All that coating has fallen off, so they need to be repaired or replaced. So I sent them all that information. I didn't get the quote back yet, they told me a week. It's not going to be cheap.
When did they install that originally?
That was before me.
Ninety-seven-ish?
Yeah, so maybe twenty years old. So I think the town has to make a, make a decision what they're going to do. I spoke to Pete about it, and Capo, what's his name, that met with us last week? Yeah, David. David. Yeah. Who was doing the town, we took a tour of the town hall and the police station, and outside at the park there as well. Keep in mind, everything's tied in. Everything's tied together.
Right.
Police station, town hall, the playground.
Yeah.
So where are you gonna put your money? What are you gonna spend it on? So my recommendation would be, because fall is, you know, very fastly approaching, do nothing till the spring, just keep it locked, or spend the money. Why spend the money if you don't know?
Yeah, and I think we'll have a better idea by the spring of what we're gonna be doing with town hall, which will make a big difference.
Right, so that way, we do have the other park, the school, unfortunately you can't use it when school is open.
Yeah.
So it's used after three.
Now until six.
I was gonna say, nobody's letting their kids outside right now anyway. Yeah, nobody's going outside right now anyway.
So I, I let myself into the park a couple weekends ago, because I wasn't at the meeting that it was discussed, so I was down, I'm helping with the community garden, so I, I went in, and I, it's been a long time since I've been there, because my girls are older, and it's really meant for a younger age group. And I couldn't believe, I couldn't believe the condition of it, because it's not somewhere I go. And for those who helped on the playground at the school, we know that there has to be X number of mulch, and where the footings are, bases, and there was, at one, one of the structures, it was at my knee, as far as the drop-down, so you could tell where there was just the lack of the padding, the swings, the, the step up to the, like the wall, the little climbing wall. I was, I couldn't believe it. And the thing is, is that park is utilized by a lot of parents with young children, because it is totally fenced in. The kids cannot wander, and it is a selling point, and I know people with daycares come down and use it, because it meets, you know, ECCs.
No, it doesn't.
ECCs qualities and those things, so, I mean, it would be great to, and I agree, we have to know what we're doing with the property and, but, you know, if there's that possibility, I think, you know, we need to have that out there.
And that's, I hate to say, that's why I recommended we close it, because the exposed concrete, I don't know, rides, you just can't have that.
Yeah, and just the drop-down from the slide, if there's a, like, two or three-year-old, that's, that's a big drop for a little baby.
So we'll have a better price, a better idea in a month or so, but it's gonna be a lot of money, but that's only secondary to the decision.
Right. Information will be for the future.
Right.
So it wasn't closed for rust, as was put out there on some websites. I know that.
There is rust, but there is rust.
I think that...
I get that.
I think the mulch is more of the...
It is.
Exposed concrete.
Because of the concrete exposed?
Yes, and the, and the footings.
For reasons, yeah.
No, I totally understand that, but, you know, it was put out there, oh, they closed it for rust.
What was the problem with it?
No, we didn't. We closed it for many reasons.
Safety issues.
There were safety issues.
That coating's there.
Exactly.
And that was very abrasive, because the coating's gone, and it's rusted steel, so you can't have somebody scrape their leg or whatever.
And once we're notified...
It's gotta be rubberized.
Exactly. That's the problem. Anything else, Pete? Great job, Chief.
Excellent.
I always count on you.
Thank you very much.
Good choice on the officer, too. Just take care of that, it's another grant.
Oh, good.
I need to see if you're for it.
Do it right now, eh?
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks for all the updates. Don't forget your hat.
Oh, no, I got it.
All right, so we have a board of health update on the triple E.
Public form?
Oh, that's not, that's not yet.
Oh, sorry.
So we have a board of health update, just if you can just read this letter, allow me here. Says, "Dear Board of Selectmen and the residents of Millville, due to triple E being found in a mosquito sample in the town of Millville, the severity risk has been raised critical. Thus far, there have been no human cases of triple E or West Nile virus found in town of Millville. The state has no complete, now has completed two rounds of aerial spraying that included Millville. The latest rounds of spraying for Millville occurred between September thirteenth and September fifteenth. Spraying commenced throughout the night and was weather-dependent. As of yet, there has been no mention of aerial spraying for a third time. The town of Millville also contracts with CMMCP, which is Central Mass Mosquito Control Project, and has been proactively ground-spraying the high-risk areas of town. The Board of Health has also closed all municipal town-owned properties from dusk till dawn. This included the Millville Elementary School field. The threat of triple E will be ongoing until the first hard frost. Therefore, it is important to use spray or wear long-sleeve shirts if there is no need to be outdoors, if there is a need to be outdoors. You can always do that indoors, too. It has been discouraged by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health to be outdoors during peak mosquito hours. It also has been suggested to mosquito-proof your homes by repairing screens and emptying any standing water on your property. Triple E is a serious health threat and can be prevented with the proper precautions. Currently, there are thirty-five communities in Massachusetts that are critical risk, thirty-eight communities at high risk, and one hundred and twenty communities at moderate risk. As of today, there are eight human cases of triple E in Massachusetts, with several animals affected as well. The Board of Health has been informing residents by using social media, cable television, and the town's website. Also, the board has utilized the new Code Red system formerly known as reverse nine-one-one. Messages have been sent out to code-red, registered residents on three occasions, warning the residents of any pertinent changes in health risk factors. Please visit the Millville Police Department website if you have not signed up for the Code Red Alert system. Should residents have any questions or concerns about the aerial or ground spraying, they can contact the Millville Board of Health, as well as the Central Massachusetts Mosquito Control Project and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Thank you, the Millville Board of Health. I think most people have been pretty well-informed of what's going on, so I think the only case, I think I've only known of one sample that was captured in Millville that's had the triple E virus.
That's correct. One mosquito caught, in a trap box, they call them.
Yeah, and that was around...
Tested for triple E, and that was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, that was like right at the end of August.
That's right.
And just because they spray, doesn't mean they get them all, because I got to buy a mosquito today.
There you go.
So, must be because you're so sweet.
The key is prevention. So I've listened in on all three of the major calls that the board help was listening in to.
Right.
And so that's really what they say, the aerial spraying is just one part of the process of trying to mitigate the problem.
Right.
Uh, it doesn't kill all the mosquitoes, at best it kills forty to eighty percent that come in contact with the poison, so. Poison does dissipate quickly, or pesticides is a better word for it. It dissipates quickly, especially in sunlight, it's, it's gone in half a day. The, the website does give advice, should you be concerned about, you know, outdoor, uh, fish ponds or your gardens and, you know, the crickets and the bees and so forth, they talk about how to deal with that, they're not so concerned, they're not concerned about, uh, that you have to do anything should they be spraying, which doesn't look like they're gonna do anymore, but we don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but should you want, close your windows, you know. The key, the real key is prevention, individual prevention, which is bug spray.
Well.
Um, you know, make sure all your screens are, um, maintained and get rid of standing water, which is the breeding ground. So that's your best bet to avoid anything and keep out of it during the hours, they're typically out.
Yeah, the chances of getting it is small, but the, the risk factors, if you do get it, it's very high, forty to fifty percent, so it's nothing that we really wanna.
That's right, they did say in one of the calls that there has not been a case reported in Massachusetts of anybody contracting triple E after September fifteenth
Okay.
In Massachusetts history, that doesn't mean that is the case this year. And the hard frost is the real key, not our weenie frost, I guess.
A weenie frost.
I will say that the Central Mass Mosquito, um, Control, and Tom, your years on Board of Health, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when they come out and spray, they come out at certain times, so in the beginning, they're, they're spraying for lave, or they're spraying, what they are using at different times during the year is all targeted like for next year's batch and this. So, for people who do have ponds or standing water near their homes, they should call, I mean, I've seen them back down my neighbor's driveway to get the back.
Right, you just put that comment on the request, back down my driveway, and I know I have.
And I know they'll do that, and, and what they're targeting at different phases from, you know, spring to fall is, is, is different, and it's that, and they say the effectiveness of that is because you're doing at all levels. So, um, you know, if people wanna get on it for next year, I, you know, it's probably a smart idea, cause I don't think it's gonna get any better.
No.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Any other questions, comments, triple E? Now we can have public forum, anybody? I'll be proud tonight, okay. Hurry up before Paul comes back, I'm just kidding. Alright, new business, update on appointment of alternate, alternate for CMR PC.
So, i- in your packet was a letter that, uh, sent to the Board of Selectmen and also the Planning Board, and on that they're looking for the town to identify a delegate as well as an alternate, and it provides for the Planning Board must, uh, appoint the delegate, and they've appointed Pam Maloney, and the Board of Selectmen and/or the town manager or administrator can appoint the, um, alternate. And so, they put forth, because they were gonna mail this in, Sergeant Bill Coop, who's also on the planning board, as the alternate, and I thought that was a great idea, if you wanted to just validate that, uh, as, uh, by a vote, that would probably be a reasonable thing to do, to consider doing.
And with the appointments, do we need, are these the dates on the back?
So it's, uh.
Is it appointment by term or?
For fiscal twenty, it says.
Fiscal twenty?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe Planning Board delegation for fiscal year twenty. Okay, any discussions on this? Anybody would like to make a motion for appointments?
I'll move to, um, nominate, no, not nominate, a point. Pam Maloney as the.
Uh, no, the Planning Board will do her, we have to do the alternate.
We just have to do Coop.
Yeah.
Okay, then I make a motion that we make, uh, Bill Coop the alternate member for the CMR PC.
I'll sec- I'll second that, for FY.
Twenty.
Twenty.
So, that would be till June seventy as well.
Okay.
And I second that.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm glad they have two members who wanna do that.
That's right, and part of what drove the, uh, identification of Coop is they had a meeting on the twelfth, first meeting, so, they wanted to get the folks to.
Okay, I think unfortunately we have to, we'll be skipping B.
That's correct, B and C.
Yeah.
Uh, they've withdrawn their, uh, candidacy, if you will, as ZBA members.
That's been Jerry Finn, yeah.
At the last minute, because of conflicts that have arisen in, uh, what they can or can't do.
Okay, well, thank you anyway, Fins, we appreciate it.
We do.
So they were ready willing, but just turned out unable to serve.
Right. Okay, discretion of potential warrant articles for STM, which will occur on eleven four nineteen. Um, let me ask a question on that, so we, we made the date ten twenty-eight, but I don't think we've changed it to eleven four.
So you haven't officially voted on it, that's correct, I did inform, you know, we have the venue and and other committees and groups are planning for that, we had discussed, but you, you, it would make sense for you to vote on that as well.
Yeah, so I think we need to make that, um, change to the building use form.
Yes, yeah, so originally it was for the twenty-eighth, and we switched it to the fourth.
Right.
Amended it to the fourth.
Any, um, discussions on that, or anybody like to make the motion?
Make a motion to hold the special town meeting on November fourth, two thousand nineteen at the Millville Elementary School at seven PM?
Yes.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Did anybody want to discuss anything, sorry? Okay, and as far as the election on the.
So that's partly driven by the clerk is going to be out of town on the tenth, um, and this provides forty-eight hour, roughly forty-eight hours before the election, to have it or not have it, it could be canceled should the ballot item, um, not be approved at the special town meeting.
So at this point in time.
Which is really just identified right now as the MES boiler.
So, um, for anybody that doesn't know, the MES boiler, um, will be on the special town meeting warrant, and should it pass, we need to bring it to, um, an election, a ballot. And at this time, if it does pass, we will have a ballot election on the sixth, but if it doesn't, we will not have the election.
That's correct, and so I'll be, we'll just be out, uh, printing, which we do in-house, and, uh, maybe some, some minor fees.
Okay.
And that's a, um, a debt exclusion.
That's correct.
Vote.
That's correct.
Just to pay for the project, and then it's gone when the project is paid for, okay.
Would anybody like to make a motion, have a ballot, uh, election ballot on the, uh, sixth?
I make a motion to hold an election ballot on November sixth, two thousand nineteen, pending the outcome of the special town meeting vote.
I'll sec- I'll second that.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, so the warrant ardo, articles, it looks like we have about ten.
Yeah, so I just put those down as potential warrant article items for your consideration, um, at some point in the not-too-distant future, you'll have to open the warrant and also pick a warrant closing date.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we'll be drafting warrant articles up, working with town council. So, I, I put these on there, it's a, quite a laundry list, and so you may think strategy and so forth, what you wanna include or what you don't wanna include. Um, items one and three are really the key drivers. Uh, item two I put on there as one of those things that ought to be at least top of mind for the voters as they think about item one, if you follow what I'm saying.
Right. So when you talk about the closing date, I really think we need to do that tonight, as I'm looking at the calendar, November fourth, so this needs to be posted by October twenty-first, that's a meeting night. So, we probably need to have it on our October seventh. All, everything in for the seventh, and that gives us two weeks if we need to meet, discuss with departments, and have it posted for the twenty-first at the latest. So I think we should put a closing date of October, I make a motion to have a closing date of, um, Monday, October seventh at five PM?
Sure.
For all articles to be submitted to the town administrator.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was that you, Nams, did you say aye?
Mm-hmm.
So October seventh at five PM, we will close the warrant.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions on the list that we have thus far?
We'll need to put it on the October seventh meeting text to officially close it that night, just so you know.
Yep.
Um, I'd like to see, and I can sit with you, an article for, um, the salary grid that we have, I know there's been changes in the state law per, um, minimum wage, I'm gonna make sure that's reflective, I don't, I think we might be a little out of compliance with that on some departments, um, and there's also a per contract for the chief, I'd like to see, um, how the board feels, uh, per contract for the contracts we do do, so for the town administrator, um, right now has arranged, I think it should be per contract, like we do for the police chief, so.
So what was the second point, what do you mean by that?
The salary grid? So, the police chief is a contract, and in our, in the, the salary grid, it says per contract, what the pay range is.
Okay.
We do a contract on the town administrator, but we have a low and a high.
Okay, gotcha.
And I think if we're doing per contract for the chief, I mean, this, we should either have a range or have per contract on the town administrator, so they're equal in, 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 yeah.
Okay.
So. And I think that's a discussion of this board to figure out how we wanna approach that. But I'm pretty sure we're out of sync on the minimum wage items. And I know that's being phased in, so that we might wanna look at how that might look in the grid, so that we're not having to change it every year, if that makes sense.
Right.
So, I don't know if it's minimum wage plus X dollars, or is it an actual number, so, I'd like to see that on there.
Any other items for discussion?
Uh, the only thing that I'm just noticing is we got, number six and number seven are both generators. Um, and the disparity in price, I don't know if that's the size of the building or usage or whatever, no?
Yeah, so I do have some hard copy of, uh, current quotes that the chief has worked on, um, and there's two things, one, the, the senior center generator has a high chance of being funded through a grant.
Okay.
But the police one does not. The police one is using current generator structure, there is no generator at the senior center, so it also needs transformers or whatever inside.
Needs a pad and everything.
Then add to the cost.
I got you, okay.
But it's the same basic volume of generator.
I got you.
One's more of an upgrade and one's new.
That's right.
So.
Okay. And one of the police stations just died, so, things are reaching the ends of their useful life apparently.
Yeah, okay. Ready to move on to new business, uh, number, letter E, Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Road Event. I don't have the paper for that, I did see it.
Also, I, yeah, he didn't provide a paper, but he just sent me an email requesting, so the dates are October twelfth is the chair, so it's the, uh, the annual Millville Knights of Columbus, annual Tootsie Toll Road on Main Street and Central Street at the lights. And they do it, uh, uh, and they do it from eight AM to one PM, and the date that they'd ask you to approve is October twelfth with a rain date of October nineteenth.
And again, I go back to, we cannot approve one twenty-two, we can only approve.
Yeah, I think, um.
The central.
So the last time, the, the, I saw, he sent a copy of the letter that, he, he didn't get to send it, the request. But last year's copy of the letter used Lincoln and, uh, and Central Street, is what you approved, I think, so that's.
Yep.
So he didn't have that in this request in the email, but I think that's what your best.
Right, and I think you made a lot, comment last time as well, so we would approve certain.
We can approve.
Are not legally able to approve Main Street, right, because it's a state road, we can approve the other two.
Right.
What they opt to do is.
You wanna make a typical motion like you do every year?
Can, um, can you just make it so that, can you just make it so that they can turn in the, the paperwork, because there is sign off by highway, there's sign off.
Yes, they will do the paperwork.
Okay, just make the motion, pending, the paperwork's turned in.
Police and highway notified, and there's a sign off sheet, that's right, yep.
Yeah, so I just wanna make sure we have the paperwork, cause there's also a thing about insurance and.
Right.
And everything else, we need to make sure that's on file before they hold it.
Understood.
So I'll make a motion to approve the toll roads at the corner of Lincoln, Main, and Central, but not on the corners of one twenty-two, um, because that's a state highway and we can't do that. Pending receiving the, uh, proper paperwork and sign offs from the department heads needed and proof of insurance.
Date of October twelfth.
October twelfth, yeah.
I mean, do we?
Nineteenth.
It's fine with me.
Okay. Anybody want a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, any discussion? All data?
Aye.
Aye.
Nams, thank you. New business? Old business, oh.
Business?
Old business.
Dead old business.
So, all business, just to, uh, just to.
Tired.
And that we, we plan to continue the current hourly structure, which is what we adopted during the summer, unless you have objections. Uh, those hours are currently, uh, Monday and Thursday nine to one, and Tuesday and Wednesday nine to three. Uh, not open Wednesday evenings, however, people can meet with, uh, folks that they need to meet with by appointment, and most people are, uh, agreeable to that.
Have you had any appointments?
So we've had a few appointments, mostly with the town clerk, who typically isn't here on Wednesday evenings anyway, hasn't been. Um, and we've had a couple of people show up at the door on some Wednes- Wednesday nights I've been here, looking for the town clerk. She historically is not here Wednesday evening, so, the folks that, you know, we will be open, uh, more, uh, we'll have some extra hours uh, during tax, quarterly tax time, um, and so I think we're accommodating the needs and people, we are getting a lot of activity uh, in those extra hours during the day, so.
And we have, and by doing this, we actually have more hours, is that correct?
Available to the public, that's correct, yes.
Yeah.
And their evening hours, um, when they make their appointments, there's someone else.
They need to be sure someone else is here, that's the policy, that's correct.
Typically a meeting night, was a meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's, cause I, I extended that if I needed to come in, I typically don't have anything on Wednesday, so if they need a, it's not a meeting night and they want someone else in the building, they can just contact me.
Okay, that's great.
Just.
Anybody on the board?
Yeah.
Cause that is a policy, I, you know, it's important, I think we stick to that policy.
Absolutely.
Safety reasons.
Uh huh.
They all live close enough, somebody can come down. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Alright, Selectmen reports, Andrew, I think you have an update for us on the regional agreement?
I do not, cause I was not at the last meeting, so.
When was, when was the last meeting?
Um, it was last Aug- this August, so, um, I do not have anything to report on that though, so.
When's their next meeting?
Uh, September, I believe it's the twenties, something, twenty-something, I forget the exact.
Are you going to that meeting?
I believe I will be, yes, so.
Can you have us an update on the next, at the next Board of Selectmen meeting? So we'll roll this forward to the next meeting.
Um, did we get minutes, I remember I asked.
There were, there was one set of minutes from an earlier meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And I did get, when I was at, and my, this'll sort of segue into my, my report, I did get, uh, when I was at the, uh, the last Wednesday night with the finance committee, they gave me a copy of, uh, the dra- the current draft of this regional agreement.
Okay.
Um, but it hasn't been officially distributed, at least, to anybody at, in this group.
Okay.
Uh, I, I, it was distributed to the finance committee members, um, from their representative, and I did look, have a draft of it, I, it's multicolored because of different changes and crossing outs and so forth. Um, and I, I did look at it, so I can give you my thirty thousand foot, you know, five or six things that are noteworthy here, so when you do get a chance to see that, cause I think the committee, from what was described at the finance committee, the rack or whatever, however you pronounce it, committee will welcome input, um, but they, you know, I think they should distribute it if they're looking for it. Um, but, anyway, some of the key changes that you'll have to digest as you look at it, they're adding some, looks like they're adding adult evening classes there. They've got in there some postgraduate students are able to be part of the population in some manner, I'm not sure how that equates to how they do this, the apportionment, but, uh, it does, it will factor in, so figuring that out, I think will be important. They have a lot on the dates of elections and on the candidate process and so forth. Um, the key change will be that they're moving, they'll be able to, the, the school committee will be able to determine which students can be in which school amongst all the schools. So arguably, you could have the seniors, Blackstone and Millville seniors at the Millville Elementary School, uh, and they can make that determination. And, so that's something the board might wanna weigh in on, and is, uh, what you like about that. It's unclear, or other things I would look for is to understand how they do their voting of such things, you know, determining how they move students around, because, you know, in some votes that you're required to take, all members must be present. That's not the case on that type of vote, it's a pretty important vote, I think so, that, that jumped out at me. How they treat capital, um, jumps out at me, you know, if you think about it, if now all of a sudden it's a mix of Blackstone and Millville, so it's totally regionalized at the elementary school, but there's no change to the cost burden of the capital nor the, a real change to the determination of what capital items and how that's done, um, is worth digesting and reconsidering, if you will. Uh, I think the definition of their costs is a little bit awkward, and they have references to sections that are old sections where those were defined. Those sections are no longer there, but they're still referencing them, so, you know, that, that needs a lot, a bit of cleanup. There's an awful lot on the budget process that's new and different than what was in there on the budget process before. So that needs to be digested and compared to also each town's bylaws, frankly, to make sure it's conforms or is consistent with the bylaws, how they're doing budgets there, um, and likewise, how the debt is to be incurred and, uh, processed. Um, and there's also some stuff in there about how they deal with additional towns going in or towns going out, but, you know, I have, again, it's just my fairly quick, I didn't study it, but those are the major things that stood out at me, that once you get a chance to look at it, I think you'll all wanna be understanding that.
Pretty quickly.
They really did, I mean, there's a lot of changes, and, and I think it's great, they have provisions for, you know, going for that periodic review of the agreement. And, you know, in Dover Sherburne, they're still working off of the, what's now a sixty-plus year old agreement without change. And, you know, I think it's, it's a good thing to be. And, you know, I think it's, it's a good thing to be evaluating how you want it to be and how it reflects the both communities.
So do you know when this board would receive that copy?
I don't know, I, you know, and I haven't reached out to anybody from that committee, but I, you know, I think maybe Andrew can push that button a little bit. Because it was distributed to the finance committee.
Well, it came from the member that was on.
That's how I got it, she, the member gave it to me, so.
But I mean, maybe they were directed to hand it out?
I don't know, no, it was electronic distribution as well. It's a draft, but that, I think the committee is looking for comments or would welcome comments, at least that's what I got from.
Who's the chair of that committee?
I don't know.
That is, I forget her name, she's on the school committee, I can't remember the name though.
Tara?
Is it Millville or Blackstone?
I think it's Blackstone.
It's not Tara, I know that.
No, it's not, no, she's one of our members, she's on the committee though.
Is it Wendy Greenstein?
I don't know their name's well enough to.
One here, dark hair.
Dark, but, yeah.
Okay.
I'll be interested in seeing that, do you think you could?
I have an electronic version I can send you, I have no restrictions on distribution, so. That's coming for me.
I'd love to read it.
There you go.
Thank you.
That's great reading.
And back to you, Peter.
Yeah, so, you know, been with the finance committee and that chair a couple of times now. They did respond quickly for the need for the H V A C and that was great. You know, the, the, the approach was they would do the reserve fund transfer now in anticipation of an, a warrant article to get it refunded, if you will, to the reserve fund transfer out of a stabilization account. So that will be one of the items on the warrant that you have on that list. We have the capital program committee meeting tomorrow night where there'll be updates from the various folks who are responsible for different capital challenges of the town, so I think everybody's looking forward to that meeting.
Just to let you know, we're gonna need the ability to do a presentation, PowerPoint presentation, so we'll need some hookups.
Okay. We'll see what we can figure out on that. I have on here, I call highway unsung as the unsung heroes. They get the unsung heroes award. There was some stuff on Facebook about a beehive over, you know, stuck, and yes, highway grumbled a little bit, but they went out and dealt with the problem. There was, Chief took me up to the M E S on the first day of school and he showed me the curb and the roadway at the curb and there was a, you know, crumbling foot and a half or so of roadway and three inch drop and, you know, broken pieces of roadway, it was a, you know, an accident waiting to happen. And then a pothole out in the back where the cars, or the road.
Don't even get me going on that back road, they should, in my opinion, and I will say this, in my opinion, no one should be driving on that back road. It was not built, I know how they use it, I get it, but that road was put in as an emergency access. It's not laid down like a road is laid down, it's laid down as an emergency access, if there's a fire, that a truck can get to the back of the building. I'm sorry, but there's other ways of dismissing without having to use that access road.
Are you talking about the, going around the back of the building? Yep, so last year, I think, is when they changed it to put the, to do the drop offs that way.
Yes, I know.
There's really not a better way to do it though, because you have the buses in the front, how else would you do that? I mean, I don't do, I never did drop, I never did drop off because it's such a disaster.
You can make the first part of the circle a two-way, you could, they could easily do it, I'm just saying. But when it comes to that road, I'm telling you, I don't, as far as repairs go and things of that sort, we have to look at what the purpose of that is and how we're utilizing it and what we're willing to invest in it. If we wanna make it a railroad and have it, then make it a railroad, so that it can handle the cars and that it go through every day. But if, right now, I mean, that is twenty-something years old, pushing thirty, right, twenty-seven years old. And that road wasn't made to be utilized like they're utilizing it over the years. Let's get off my horse, but I'm just saying, that's my opinion.
I pushed the button there, didn't I?
Everybody just to pick its own bus.
So all I wanted to say was.
There's a pothole in the back.
It turns out there were two potholes in the back and this, you know, ankle breaking thing out, right out front as you walk in. So I pleaded and begged and Highway went up there and took care of it fairly quickly and nicely done. So I give them that. Then there's a quick, you know, a sinkhole on Lincoln Street and it turns out it's, you know, drainage, a steel drainage pipe. The sidewalk collapsed into the steel drainage. And they had to repair a hundred feet, replace a hundred feet of that, and they did that fairly quickly. And that was, you know, town right away, so it was our burden, but they did that. And then you see Central Street, that's ongoing, you know, sidewalks, they were pouring sidewalks and curbing's gone in and continues to go in, pretty soon they'll get, be getting, once they get the sidewalks done, they'll be ready to do the last bit of the big drainage where the dip is and do the roadway, rip it up and put the new pavement down. That part will go quickly. But Brian wanted me to make sure the folks know they will be doing some Saturday work, starting this Saturday. Not every Saturday, but some Saturdays, and it sounds like Saturday while the weather's good, so that's going on.
I will say, I did, I was speaking to one of the highway workers, Mr. Sheen, and he was saying that he, I was teasing him, saying, oh, you stand around all day. And he was telling me that the, that he's kind of the clerk of the works, he's monitoring how many men, what the materials they're using, they're always there working, all of that. And he said that the company, whatever they wanted to charge was like forty thousand dollars or something, right? It was this unreal amount, so they were able to have, Brian was, this, what was told to me, so. Was able to have Jonathan oversee the work going on during the day at his hourly rate versus
That's correct.
The amount of money that we would have been paying, so hopefully, if there's things that pop up, we're gonna have money to play with to, to cover other expenses if need be.
I'm foreseeing expenses, 'cause there always is.
'Cause they wanted to send out like an engineer to.
Right, to be the clerk of the work.
Yeah, to do that, and, but it's really, I mean, they have a format of the materials you're using, the manpower, the whole things and he submits a daily report as to what's going on and what they've done, so I thought that was a good idea. A good use of money.
Yeah, and he's doing a good job of it too. The crew there, contractors doing a good, good job.
How much did he say was sent in?
I'll have to ask.
I think it's more than forty, I think it's.
It just doesn't sound right, because it's a public project, you're supposed to be paid a certain rate no matter who you work for.
It was a large amount of wage.
Exactly.
That's good. Updates on marijuana, if you wanted briefly.
Yeah.
So still ongoing conversations with the two interested folks, the folks that, the grow people and the other gentleman that was here, I did just get a business plan from him today and made a suggestion how the structure of a deal might be that is in everybody's best interest.
Lincoln Street?
So yes, we've been, how shall I describe it on camera in a nice way?
Here, I'll say voices on.
Yes, we're in communications, we're back talking. Apparently there is a host agreement that I could not find.
Really?
What she provided, but it's, it's, there's something wrong with what she provided. But in any event, we're in communications and back to identifying what it is they need from us. It's not specific yet.
So they had the two licenses for manufacturing and
Crowling.
And production, or whatever, whatever the two names are, and I know they had.
Wholesale and production, that's right.
So, they had said that if we ever had a second retail, that they would be interested. That was because, at the time, we didn't, we didn't realize the two licenses of production.
We didn't realize that they needed two separate licenses for what they wanted to do.
So, well, they got those two and the town had, we thought we had two, but come to find out, it was only retail, like you don't need for the other piece. So there were some things on the state level, so then we figured out that we actually had, we put in for the second retail. So they had made mention that they would be interested in that, that other retail if it came available. So I know this other gentleman came in, but I wanna just keep you in the loop.
That I did not know.
So when you're talking to Lisa and, I can't think of her name, just, yeah, partner. Talk, talk to them about that, or I can sit and talk with you at one point and.
Okay, no, that's, that's a new, that'll help spur better, speedier communication, how about that?
And I think that first host agreement, there was things in there that we found when we did Marty's, 'cause we used it as a template when it came back, because the law had changed before, because remember they had, they had paused it and referendum it and everything.
Yeah, but their contract should be consistent with the law at that point in time, the one with Marty's was post the change in the law. So I think they're both legitimate, just under different sets of laws.
And that's why you're probably seeing things in theirs that's not in the others because of the timeframe in which they were signed.
Okay, good, so I'm glad we had that.
So I just don't want the Lincoln Street people to find out we have that second retail and we didn't have that discussion with them, because that was clearly stated to us at one point, that they would be interested as a possible storefront.
Great. Yeah, so other things, we need a few, we still need a veterans agent, we're trying to recruit one or more folks and Kevin's gonna help me a little bit and I've reached out to some other folks on that regard.
Qualification?
You have to be a veteran and a resident of the town, and then there is a training session coming up, I think it's in October.
I don't think you have to be a resident of the town, I don't think that's.
I don't think so, because Northbridge, Oxbridge, Douglas, they all share one.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
So, okay.
Check that.
Right, you do have to be a veteran though.
Yeah, you do have to be a veteran, yes. Cultural council needs two people, so they've just reached out to me today to help them recruit on that and we need zoning board, full member and associate member. So just keep plugging away at that, those are great oppor, great opportunities for adding value to the town should anybody choose to wanna do that.
Still need one assessor, right?
And we need one assessor, that's right. Then we'll have some stuff towards the end here as we go into executive session.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you.
So we have signatures, we have three items.
So, I, I didn't, you actually didn't take a vote on this, you don't really necessarily need to sign it. I put it in as N A for expediency is how I described it, I did put it on the list just in case you wanted to. But then we just have the two sets of minutes, which will be, you know, one set will be changed. Just for the typos.
Let me see if I can get the executive session. Correct.
Excellent. I just have to say.
Keep an eye on me.
Peter, these meetings run so much smoother since you've been here, thank you.
Well, thank you for that, I don't, I can't compare to what they were, but you guys are doing a great job of processing a lot of production and dealing with issues, you're decisive, that's good. Some of you have some history too.
Some one another's.
That's a burden we carry as townies, right Tom?
Certainly is.
No greater badge.
So our next regular scheduled meeting will be Monday, October seventh, same place, same time, seven P M. Does anybody have any items not reasonably anticipated for your eyes? All right, so now we're going to go into executive session. See if I can do this correctly, first I gotta take a roll call, right?
Well, you do your motion.
I'm not saying a word!
Your motion, it gets seconded, any discussion and then the roll call.
Do you want to make a motion, go into executive session?
I make a motion to enter executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one A three to discuss strategy relative to pending or threatening litigation where discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigation process of the town and to reconvene in open session to adjourn the meeting.
Would you like to second?
Second, pardon me, second.
All right, roll call?
Aye.
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 Okay.
All right.
Good.
Thank you for coming, folks.